All right, if you will stand with me and let's have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you today for your blessings, Lord, and just to have another day to come together, Lord. I pray that you'll guide us as we make decisions, Lord, that guide our community and that guide our county. Be with all of our elected officials today, Lord. Be with our workers today for Titus County and our first responders all over this county and this nation, Lord. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the God for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to Commissioners Court today being the 27th of January 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. This is our second major meeting of the month, and we'll begin with item number one. This is public comment time, and we will be lenient with you speaking on any other items when they come up. But if you have a specific item that you'd like to talk about right now that's not on the agenda, and I do have one request here from George Sanford, but if anybody else would like to, you're welcome to fill out one of these forms. But I'll recognize George Sanford, please.
Give you a little history of me. I do subdivision flats for people that want to build subdivisions, and also do unsite soil evaluations and everything for people putting in septic systems out in the county. And during the course of one of those subdivision flats that we're doing, there is a, the county adopted new rules on what has to happen for subdivisions, whether you've got to have a public road, county road, or how it's built. This particular subdivision is right off what is designated as Private Road 1121. That designation comes from the 911 group out in Dexter County. It's right off County Road 1123. But it applies to a lot of other roads within the county's jurisdiction. What they deem as a public road, private road, or county road. At the end of the road, if there's more than one residence there, the individual where the road crosses his property is not allowed to close that road because there's somebody else that's their only access into their property. And that's the clarification that we need going forward, is when the county does not have to assume responsibility at any time for what is actually a public road, if it's crossing private property. And that's what the main issue is, is whether this road classifies or it was actually put in prior to the county's ruling on subdivisions. There shows to be a residence at the end of this road that was actually built in 1964. That's how long the road has been there. And at one time, it actually met county standards. If you go down and look at it, it had ditches on it, it had culverts on it, it had a rock base, and it had asphalt surface on it. So it was, had possibility of even been a county road at that time because back then, before we started 911 addresses, there were no signed road numbers. It was rural route, whatever it was. I'm not looking for clarification from y'all today, but I did want to bring it out, let y'all start talking about it and figuring out, because this is not going to be the only road in the county that's going to be that way. There's other, you call them driveways, driveways that are a mile long that gave access to people across somebody else's property. And that's going to become a bigger issue as we start growing as a county now. And that's the only comments. I'm not looking for a solution today, but I did want to bring it up.
What you've got written on here, that's your address. I got confused. 226 County Road 4224. That's your address.
Yes.
I'm sitting there looking at that, and you're talking about-
That's my address, yes.
-Private Road 1121. And you're, and this is a subdivision at Lake Tankersley. Well, tell me exactly what it is that we need to be thinking about.
The rules that the county has adopted for development for subdivisions that says that the new roads going in have to meet the new county standards. And that is absolutely fantastic. If you don't have access off a current county road, when you put a new road in there, it has to meet the county standards. And that is going to be great because that's going to save a lot of headache in the future and cost to the citizens of Titus County. But in this particular case, their road already existed, existed there since 1964 because that piece of property was not adjoined to everything else that that road crosses. And that's where it becomes the issue. Are any of these old roads grandfathered in? We do have a bunch of county roads, or private roads down in the south part of the county, where people have still got a rock road down there. But they were not, they were grandfathered, they were not forced to bring it up to county standards. If the county wants to adopt the road, what the rules say is you've got to bring it up to the county's standards first for the county to ever take it over and take care of the maintenance on it. So the owner is not looking for the county to take it over. He just wants to verify that he got access to anybody that lives along that road once he subdivides it.
Okay. So it sounds like this will be something we're going to have to deal with in the future on this Stafford subdivision. This question will come up?
And that will be coming before the Commissioners Court in the future. But before he can do that, that's one resolution that they're looking to see what he has to do about the road.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting. That was January 13th, a couple of weeks ago.
Make that motion.
Motion is made to approve by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second is made by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's move right into our report from Commissioners regarding roadwork, status goings-on. I'll start with Commissioner Parker.
We've just been doing some patching. Few, when the weather's allowed it, we've done a few soft spots, dug them out, cleaned them out. We had a little issue Friday that we spent about a half a day on down on the, what we call the casing loop. It's 4950. On the covert that we put in back in 16, I guess it was, it was a big, big covert, big tank car that we put in down there. And we don't know for sure if it was a beaver or if it was something else that got in there and blocked about half of it up. We had water backed up, and we finally were able to push it loose and break it loose to get it out of there. Something we'll go after watch and make sure that it's not a beaver building, trying to build a dam inside that tank. But we're just, just doing some patching and a few trees and stuff right now.
Today, we're going to finish up some patching. We got patching all over. And I said it's a never-ending job. And we got, put in a few culverts. We've tilled up a 3260 and 3249, and we're going to get it, trying to get it ready for this spring to chip seal. And with the weather regard, it's wet, and just do so much. And we've just got to watch the weather. Today, we've got to watch the fog.
Commissioner, two.
I've been doing a lot of ditch cleaning all around the precinct and some patching. We're going to do some more patching this week as it dries up and warms up. A lot of side cutting out in the West New Hope community. And also got with TexDOT Friday, and we went around and inspected all the ditch work and the cross culverts that had been put in for the Williamson Creek Bridge project and the Hart Creek Bridge project. And all that's been approved and took off the list. So we got our, our required parts are done for those bridges, and they're finishing up the design on the bridges. It's still, at the engineer who's finishing up his design, and then they'll start on them sometime, I'm thinking this summer when they get a draw, to get the contractor started on them. So that worked out really good.
Commissioner Riddle?
We spent most of the last two weeks cleaning ditches and preparing roads for seal coating in the spring and patching.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Item number four, considering possibly approved, our annual outside auditor's report. The annual audit has been completed for the year ended September 30th, 2019, and we welcome Lanny Walker. Arnold Walker and Arnold have completed that audit for us.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with y'all today. And I'll kind of run you through the report just a little bit and highlight some things for you. First of all, let me just say that you have a clean opinion in what we call an unmodified report. In other words, the numbers y'all are seeing during the year are good numbers. Y'all have had a good county auditor's role here. Carl has done a good job, and Barbara seems to be doing a good job. And so I don't have any recommendations to bring to you as far as that. Everything's in good order there. But if you have a report there, I'll flip you over to, I'm going to start on page 15, page 15 in the report there, and just highlight some, some numbers. And this is fiscal year ended September 30th of 2019. And in the general fund, y'all ended the year with just a little less than $5.8 million in fund balance. That was an increase of $300,000 over the previous year, so very good year. And we'll look at some of the reasons why this occurred in just a moment on another page. The other funds, I might just kind of mention that overall, our cash position was increased over the previous year by 1.1 million. Couple of reasons for that was the, the collection of the prior year's delinquent taxes on Luminate, and then also the settlement of the, the bridge construction. We were able to receive that money. And so those are the main two ingredients of that increase, I believe. I'll talk, talk a little bit about the fund balances of all the various funds. As far as fund balances of our capital projects funds, we ended the year with 3.6 million. That's a decrease of 1.44 million. And the reason for that decrease is because we sent 2.4 million out of, out of the old Loop Construction Fund and closed it out, and sent that over to the debt service funds. The debt service funds, we ended the year with a fund balance of 6.2 million, which is about 2.8 more, 2.8 million more than the previous year. And as I just said, we transferred 2.4 million over into there. So we had an increase above and beyond that transfer of about 400,000. The other funds, which are various and many, you can look, if you want to look back in the reports, you can see schedules that show what these other funds were. They were down about 83,000, so not a big change there. 1.8 million in fund balance in those funds. And again, as I said, the, the general fund ended the year with 5,792,000 in fund balance. And that's, as I said, 300,000 more than the previous year. If you look at page 18 and 19, looking at the general fund, as I've said, we had the nice increase there. Revenues were up about 1.2 million in the general fund this year. Main reason for that is, is because of the Luminate collection. I believe about 860,000 of that money that they, they paid us on those years went into the general fund. And then, so overall, our revenue was up 1.2 million in the, in the general fund. Our expenditures were only up 460,000. Most of the categories were very similar to the prior year. Had an increase of 2.8% in, in public safety, which is mostly the Sheriff's Department Jail, which was $155,000 more than the previous year. Other funds, as I said, total tax revenues were up 1.9 million for all the funds. And as I mentioned, we had the, if you'll notice there, we had other revenue of $1,425,000. And 975,000 of that was the construction, the collection of that suit on the construction. And that went into the Loop Construction Fund. And so overall, our fund balances went up by 1.6 million, almost, just a little over 1.6 million. If you look over on page 23, I'll call your attention to a couple of things there. We've got some enterprise funds, which basically are not tax-driven. They pay for themselves. They perform services for either the county or for other entities. And that's mainly the Election Fund, and there's a Sheriff's Commissary Fund. Those two funds went down by 120,000. We've still got 346,000 in there. The Election Fund went down by 123,000. I believe we had some, some capital outlay in that fund that, that caused that for the most part. The, the total internal service funds, and the main internal service fund has always been the health insurance fund. We've had that set up for a long time as we were self-funded. And those funds increased by 554,000. The insurance fund actually went up by 533,000. Our claims this, this fiscal year were down 200,000 compared to the prior year as far as health claims that we had to pay out. So all that said, our numbers are good. Our financial condition is strong. Just in, in case you guys, and you probably have looked at the report, but just in case you as Commissioners wanted to know where you stood, if you looked over on page 48.
Hey, Lanny, before you do that-
Yep.
Since you brought up the discontinuance of the self-funded insurance-
Mm-hmm.
Kind of tell us how this is going to play out over the next year as we've now transitioned to a situation with, with full insurance, fully funded insurance.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to have to maintain a large reserve to pay those claims.
That's right. That's right.
And so I'm thinking that once we pay out all of our claims, and hopefully we know those by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of September, that would give us nine months to pay out claims, and surely that'll pay the vast majority.
I would think so.
What happens with that fund that contains monies that we used to keep in that pot for medical expense?
Well, I would think, I would think what you would do is just transfer that back to the general fund because most of that money, you know, was funded by the general fund, some by the road and bridge funds, but mostly by the general fund. And so, once those claims are paid off in, say, eight or, you know, eight or nine months, if, you know, if there's a couple hundred thousand dollars left, which I wouldn't be surprised if there's not that much left, I would say you could transfer that back to the general fund and, you know, because, as I said, most of that's come from there through the years. So that would be my thought.
So is that a discussion that we have next year to enable you to do a closing entry for that account?
Yes, I think so. Mm-hmm.
Or do we need to wait, I mean, a conservative amount of time to be sure that all that is paid?
I think, I think if you wait till September 30th, I think we could just go ahead and transfer that and clear that to zero. So I don't see any reason to wait longer than that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. As I was going to say, if you as Commissioners wanted to look at your balances, we have those on some of these combining schedules back over in the back. Page 48 is the, will show you the fund balance of the various road and bridge funds. And then over on the, the pages after that, it shows you the income and expense for those funds during the year. So as I say, I don't have any, any problems to report to you. One of the things that Barbara and I had talked about, and I think you have a budget amendment for it today, is the simplification to some degree of, of your books. For several years, we've, we've always had about four or five different debt service funds, you know, that were, where we were setting the budget just for each of those particular debts for those different bond proceeds that we'd received through the years. And it's not absolutely required that you have a separate fund for each of those. And so, you know, what has happened, particularly since we've been collecting on the note receivable from TexDOT to pay for the Loop Construction, is we get the money in, and then they have to do about five or six entries to spread it out between all these different funds. And so for ease in the future, you know, if, if the court so decides, you know, there's nothing wrong with you just having one debt service fund and all that, the tax money that's collected for debt service goes in there, and then all the receivables from TexDOT goes in there, and then the debt payments are made just out of that one fund. There's, there's no requirement that you have a separate fund for each of those. You can combine all of those. And I think you've got that on the, the agenda today to do that. So there's not a, not an issue with that.
No disadvantage, we're not losing trackability or anything like that?
No. No, you still got to, you know, you, I would still budget probably separate, a separate line item for each of the principal payments for each of the different bonds and the interest. So you're going to have probably 10 or 12 different categories of expenditures within that fund. But that way, you know, your, your budget's going to match your amortization schedules on the debt repayment. So it's just a matter, you know, you had that all separate, just in different funds, and it'll still be separate, except it'll just be a lot easier to, to, you know, track the revenue and not have to make these transfers back and forth, you know, as you go during the year when the, when the debt payments come to you. So I think it'll be a little easier bookkeeping-wise.
And we are going to discuss that, but the bottom line is that, that just simplifies things for the auditor?
It does. It does. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. If not, I, you know, I just-
We have a clean opinion?
Yes.
We have no issues to discuss, either minor or major?
None.
Any trends you see, positive or negative, that we ought to be aware of?
No. I'm, you know, I'm glad that the Luminate thing is finally behind y'all and got that done. And, but no, you know, as I said, through the years, you know, I don't know what the future holds as far as our tax base, but through the years, through good management of the Commissioners Court and the Auditor's Office, you know, you've been able to build a good fund balance. And so I don't have any to say. I think you're really sound, financially strong condition, so.
You have an opinion, or maybe you want to think about this response as to what, you know, county of our size with the revenues that we have, what good conservative fund balance to maintain would be? You know, we've had some, we still have what I consider to be a pretty high fund balance. We got an injection there when we settled up with Luminate.
Mm-hmm.
Another injection from the settlement of the, of the lawsuit, which didn't necessarily go to the, to the general fund. But here we are, sitting still at 5 billion plus. We've kind of been looking at that same figure for years, and we keep talking about, you know, chipping away at some of that. What would be a reasonable target to be shooting for so that we don't get used to this size of a fund balance forevermore because it's, we're not going to continue to have these extraordinary items coming in?
Right. Well, the, the general standards for government has always been try to maintain at least three months of operating capital available. And for, in your case, I would guess that's going to be about a million dollars a month, probably. So I would say a minimum of 3 million, you know, the, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's, that's the minimum, I would think.
Somewhere between 3 million and 5 million.
Yes, yes. Mm-hmm.
4 would be a good conservative number?
Yes, I think so. 4 million would be, yeah.
Would that, would that still give us good, a good opinion from a bond rating institution should we need that in the future?
I think so, yes. Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, any questions here for Lanny?
I don't have any.
Well, thank you for the services of your company once again.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
You just have any trouble out of any of these gals down here during the process?
No, 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 they did good. They did good.
This year, we put the auditors downstairs in James's office rather than having them here in the courtroom, and that's worked out okay.
It worked out really well, yes. Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lanny.
Thank you, Lanny.
All right. If you have any further questions, discuss, to discuss. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the annual outside auditor's report for the year ended September 30th, 2019.
I'll make that up.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, discuss health insurance consulting contract with Higginbotham in light of the discontinuance of the county's self-funded air insurance plan with possible action to follow. And Steve and Tony are here, and they'll elaborate a little bit more. But I think we're, we're here at a point where some decisions need to be made for our benefit, but it's just as importantly for the benefit of Higginbotham so that they know what to expect, and it helps them to budget in months and years ahead. But right now, we continue to pay a consulting fee to Higginbotham, and they have served us extremely well for several years while we've continued with our self-funded insurance. Now we are out of that. We are completely in the hands of a new, fully funded insurance through Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and through TAC. We'll continue to have for a while at least some runout expenses that we need to pay for claims that were generated prior to the end of 2019. So we need a little bit of handholding, at least for a while, from Higginbotham. But I would like to get, if you're ready today to make a decision on how much longer we'll continue to work with Higginbotham, whether it be immediately, whether it be long-term, just what might they be able to provide for us. So Steve, Tony, whoever we like to speak, we thank you for being here.
First of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to work with y'all for the past, I think it's been five or six years, but it's been a pleasure. And some of you have been with it for the whole time, Mr. Riddle and Judge Lee. Thank you for, for everything you've done for us. But kind of looking forward, what I'm wondering is, you know, we, we did discuss that you're going to do the 12-month runout. You've already paid the admin for that. So those claims are going to be, continue to be paid by UMR for the next 12 months. So that being said-
Claims related to anything that occurred at any point in 2019?
Exactly. Prior to the end of December, then those claims are going to be, are going to continue to be paid by UMR. You will be able to get a lag report, which is a, a report that'll show you the claims that are outstanding and what they've paid so far. And I would suggest possibly that if you continue our services, we'll look at that maybe quarterly, just to kind of see where you are on that. Because that'll give you a good indication as to how many are still left to be out there in the pipeline. So that might be something, and, and I'm not sure if I agree about the September. Steve might have more to talk about that as far as you looking in December, because if you discontinue that fund and claims do come in for the last quarter, you just have to figure out how you're going to pay for them. Okay? So, just a second.
Will we have a pretty good feel for anything that might be out there come September?
We should.
Or is there-
Yeah, that's what that lag report's going to show you. And I can get that as often as you need to look at it. I would say probably quarterly. I do know, like, some, you know, it's usually a pretty, pretty good indication of what you have yet to pay. Okay? And as Mr. Walker did say, you did have a great year last year. So I was so glad to hand you off on that, on that note. So that was really, a, a really blessing to have that, that great claim share. Also, the, the next phase is, I'm not sure, I know that, that Higginbotham deals with Franklin County, and we have been their consultant through a fully insured contract with TAC for up to years. And I'll, I'll let Steve speak more to Franklin County because I actually don't handle that account. Not sure exactly if any of us know your need going forward with TAC, if you're going to even need us or if you're not, you know? So we obviously, we serve the pleasure of the court. So if you feel that we're doing you a service, we'd love to continue to be that service for you to kind of, because people don't, they don't even call us anymore. They just walk in. Okay? So we, but people that just, you know, come in with, with whatever issue they may have, and sometimes we're able to help them, sometimes we're able not to help them. But that's just because we are not the arbiter of the insurance. We are the facilitator to try to get those situations resolved as best we can. That is, that, that is my two cents. So does anybody have any questions directly to me before I turn it over to Steve?
You mentioned Franklin County. Who, who is their insurer? Is it TAC?
It's TAC with Blue Cross, and they're fully insured. And they actually left us for about two years and then came back. So again, I'm, Steve knows more about the TAC, about the Franklin County history than I do. Again, Steve is, is the broker on that. And Gail Peacock, who is an account manager who deals specifically in claims, is the one who handles all their claims. And that is something that is transitioning in our office this year. Gail is moving from more of an account manager position into a claim specialist position. And she is available, you know, to help with, with anyone's claims. But in particular, if you continue with this arrangement with us, she would be your, your, your first stop for a claim service because she is in the office most of the time and able to facilitate anybody that walks in and has an issue.
Obviously, TAC would be of the opinion that they can be our one stop for any issues- Obviously, TAC would be of the opinion that they can be our one stop for any issues that come up. I, that's at least, that's the way that they presented it to us. In your opinion, I mean, obviously Franklin County felt differently about it. I'd like to hear more from Steve about that, as to what, in a fully funded, fully insured relationship with TAC, what is it that you can do for them?
There's always claims issues. I mean, the majority of what we write, and I have over 300 groups, I only have two self-funded ones. And I can tell you, I deal with claims on those groups every day, and a lot of them are with Blue Cross. Even though TAC is your administrator, Blue Cross is still the insurer, okay? And yes, you do have people there with TAC, but I think there's some value in walking in someplace and dealing with somebody that you've dealt with for the past five years. That's just my opinion. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know whether or not you're gonna be fully served by TAC or not. You may, you may be, and you might not need us. And if that's the case, then I totally support your decision to cut us loose. I just don't know what I can tell you. I don't know how much you're gonna need us at this point.
Obviously, you are a local geographically, where we can come in and drop by and get you to explain all this stuff that sometimes gets difficult to understand. And we will lose that ability going forward, in which case you'll just say, "I'm sorry, we're no longer your representatives." You'll need to contact TAC.
Yeah.
You'll need to contact Commissioner Fitch, if you have any thoughts.
Or whoever.
Whoever. Okay. In your recommendation, to handle these runout claims that we know will be, we know that there's going to be a significant number of those come in in the next 60, 90, 120, I don't know how long, as a bare minimum, if we wanted to end this relationship as quickly as practical, and I hate to use those words, "in this relationship," we've discussed the reasons why, what would be a reasonable cutoff point, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we don't have an advocate that's working for us to make sure that those 2019 claims get handled properly?
I mean, if you're highlighting 9-1, and Mr. Walker had said 9, I mean, maybe that's your stopping point. I don't know. I mean, I truly, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you how long to do this, so. But, you know, we would have a good indication probably by then of what claims are still remaining and what's out there yet to be paid. The only problem with that is insurers do have 18 months to file the claim. So that, you could have a truckload of claims come in in August.
But how realistic is that?
It's, I mean, I had a Blue Cross insured group last week I went to, that we were figuring out claims from 2018. And because you did have a paid contract, that means that UMR's gonna handle, even for claims that come in prior to 2019, they're gonna handle them in all the runout. I, I, again, I can't tell you what's gonna happen. There's just the possibility that you could have claims come in. Just be aware. That's all I'm saying.
And it's not that they would not pay them, 'cause they have agreed to pay for 12 months of runout. It's gonna come down to-
They're gonna do the administration.
Do we need an advocate that's gonna say, "Hey, now wait a minute. Here's the situation here. You're not looking at this right for such-and-such employee. You need to go back and here's the circumstances."
And it's not UMR not paying the claim. It's more the provider not sending in the claim, is where that lag's gonna be. I mean, UMR's gonna pay the claim. They're required to pay a prompt pay block within a certain X number of days. The problem is, you've got providers out there that for one reason or another, don't submit the claim, but they do have 18 months to file it. I'm gonna let Steve talk a little bit more about it.
Tony, right now, what do we pay you each month? What's the current fee?
It is $14 per head, for whatever, however many people you have.
$2,000 a month, roughly?
A little bit less. Usually the average is about $1,900, something like that, $1,980, depending upon your volume.
Thank you. Steve?
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I agree with Tony. We certainly appreciate your business. Want that relationship to continue. You know, you originally hired us as a consultant to be an unbiased advocate for you, regardless of the insurance carrier, whether it would be a partially self-funded arrangement, where, you know, we dealt with multiple administrator, got quotes or proposals from multiple administrators, stop-loss carriers, those kind of things. It really, you know, I would say 95% of the business that we write is on a fully insured basis, where we are commissioned agents, a commissioned agent. And you just pay us differently under a consulting contract, okay? We are independent, and it doesn't matter to us whether, especially the way you're paying us, it doesn't matter to us whether you're with TAC or UMR, or UHC, or Cigna, or whoever. We wanna do what's best for the county, and we continue to look at all those options every year, like we've always done, to make sure you're getting the best deal for the money that you're paying out. That's part of what we do. The other part is the active management of your claims, which is gonna be a little bit different under a fully insured program as opposed to the partially self-funded. You'll, some of you will recall times where we made mid-year changes because of things that were going on in the claims part of the situation, or processing, claims that were getting paid that maybe we didn't want them being paid the way they were being paid, and we made mid-year changes. You're not gonna be able to have that under the fully insured program with TAC. Or it would really depend if it was TAC or anybody else, the fully insured program, you basically get a canned list of plans that you choose from, and you have that until renewal time, okay? Whereas with, under the partially self-funded, then we were actively managing. If you remember, we were meeting on a quarterly basis or semi-annual basis, looking at those things and seeing where, you know, things need to be tweaked to better facilitate the financials of the program, and also to the benefit of your employees. We never did wanna do anything that would, you know, take away from your employees. For instance, you know, we had, if y'all remember, we had a special drug, I can't remember which one it was, new drug that came out, it was $6,000 or $7,000 of prescription, and all it was, was two medications combined into one. Y'all remember that? Brian, you remember that? Okay? And that could get two prescriptions for like 50 bucks, as opposed to paying for one at 6,000. And so those are the kind of things that we look at and try to do to you. And just because you're fully insured, like our rest of our fully insured groups, we can do the same thing for them. You just pay us differently, okay? We could be paid, we could be a commissioned agent with TAC. We'd just be getting paid differently, okay? So all of our fully insured groups, we continue to service them and, you know, help them with claims. We look at their, analyze their claims on a semi-annual basis and make recommendations at renewal time, in addition to go into market with the group, okay? You know, unless you're deciding to just go with TAC and stay with them forever, you're still gonna need someone to have an unbiased opinion about where you ought to be, okay? And some recommendations there. It may be that TAC does a great job, and they do a great job. Blue Cross is our lead carrier, okay? We ride a lot of business with Blue Cross. And so just the fact that you're going from partially self-funded to fully insured doesn't mean that there's not things that we're gonna be doing to help you manage your claims, that you're just gonna not, you're not gonna be able to do those midterm. It's gonna be at renewal time when you're looking at that. And if you want to know what United Healthcare, Cigna, or some of the carriers, how they would look, TAC's not gonna go do that for you, okay? That would be something that you would hire either a consultant or go out to bids for, that kind of thing, just like you've done in some in the past, okay? So that really, you know, just going from partially self-funded to fully insured, doesn't negate the need for someone to, you know, intervene on your behalf. And I'm not even talking about claims, okay? I mean, that's one of the deals. As a matter of fact, when Tony mentioned Franklin County, that's really the main thing that they had an issue with. It was kind of interesting, because we were at the Commissioners Court meeting, and the judge finally, we were kind of going through some of these same discussions, and the judge finally asked the employees in the group, and they happened to have a pretty good crowd of employees there that morning, and they were not too happy about, you know, if they were gonna terminate our contract, not too happy about having to call an 800 number in Austin or wherever to get their claim settled. They had been really used to having Gail Peacock. Just one call or one visit, and she took it. She got a release form signed, and she called the providers, and whatever the issue was, did her best to get it resolved. So to be honest with you, that's what kept us on that group, was the employees being accustomed to coming by or calling our office to get help on the claims. You know, Franklin County's a significantly smaller group than you, 60 employees or something like that, so there's not a whole lot you can do. There's, you know, they're not eligible really for, they're too small to be partially self-funded. So, I mean, they have fewer options when it relates to providers. So, but anyway, I thought that was pretty interesting, and it was good to hear that the employees did see value in our services as it relates to, you know, it's kind of two different worlds. I mean, you're trying to manage the finances. Your employees just wanna know when they have a claim, that it's gonna get handled properly, right? And so we try to handle both of those aspects and be compassionate towards those employees that need help and do our best to do what we can to help them. And you need to know, too, that as you, you know, however long, if you wanna keep on going great, or if you say six months, you're gone, or whatever, we're going to service those Blue Cross claims, too, okay? We're not gonna go, "Oh, we're just doing UMR." Okay? We're gonna continue to service any issues that you have with Blue Cross, too. We're gonna continue, just everything we've been doing, we're gonna continue to do for you, okay? So, and, you know, time will tell. Well, they're not, you know, they're okay. If they wanna call 800 number and get their service, that's fine. If they wanna call us, that's fine. As long as you're paying us, we're gonna give you everything that you've been getting in the past, okay? And at renewal time, if, you know, you get a 20% increase from TAC and you wanna shop the group, then we will shop the group. We can look at partially self-funded again, we can look at fully insured, whatever, okay? And truthfully, even if you said, "Okay, through September, and you wanna shop," we're already, you're already positioned to be able to do that. We would just continue on doing like we've been doing in the past, so. So from that perspective, we're gonna give you everything that you've been getting, regardless of how long you extend our contract, whether we continue on until, you know, this discussion comes up again, or whether it's six months or whatever, we're gonna give you everything that you've been getting in the past, okay? I want you to understand that. And really, I don't, you know, other than that, I just, we appreciate you. No matter what you do, we're gonna respect your decision, and we hope that we have another opportunity in the future if you decide to terminate, or, you know, whatever. We wanna continue to be your consultant, okay? And I can tell you, we do a lot of service work on your group. We have folks come by our office, what, three or four times a month, probably, something like that? I don't know. We could, yeah, three or four times a week, so. And I know from your perspective, you don't see that, okay? That's something that you're not, unless you've had some issues in the past, you don't see that. You're kind of removed from that, but, you know, in, if you extend our contract in that process, you might wanna ask your employees, do they wanna call 800 number? Or do they wanna be able to come to our office, or, you know, call us, or come to our, you know, whatever? So, and I can tell you, and, you know, as far as our fee is concerned, the normal commission on your size group would be about 3.5% of the premium. That would be the normal commission, okay? So what are you paying a month? Barbara, what's your first, what was your first bill? Okay. Four grand, 4,500, or whatever that number comes out. That would be the normal commission on your size group, okay? So we're significantly discounted on what the normal fee would be, okay? So I don't know whether that helps you or not. It's still, you know, $24,000 a year, thereabouts, but anyway.
So we have employees coming to you for help with their Blue Cross claims?
Will you? Oh, yeah.
No, do we right now?
Oh, I doubt seriously you've had any claims get, you know, it's just January 1, so. Providers are usually not that fast, so, but I would expect, yeah, sure. I mean, like I say, we've got a full-time person that handles probably 80% of what she does, or 85% of what she does is Blue Cross claims, you know? So, anyway, and we can, you know, we'd be happy to report those. You know, we'll start tracking how many folks we service, you know, if you want us to. That's no problem. Six months, we can tell you, we can come back and say, "All right, this is what we did." And you can throw that into the pot of all the other items that whether or not you wanna keep us employed or not, so.
I think we need to ask you all to start giving them that 800 number. We need to start training them to utilize TAC more. I mean, they said they were gonna do that.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as we continue to make it easy for them to come by your office, I'm afraid we can create work for you indefinitely if we're not careful. And we need to at least challenge and try to-
See, here's the deal, though, Brian. When you call 800 number, that person on the other end is gonna talk insurance language, okay? And they really, I mean, your employees just don't, I mean, they prefer to talk normal English, okay? We try to speak normal English to them, because they'll be talking procedure codes and all kinds of stuff, that they need to call their doctor, and, you know, change the procedure code, or whatever, you know, the issue is.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I don't, you know, if you don't wanna provide that level of service for your employees, then that's fine. Just give them 800 number and say, "That's your place of service," and that's fine. But I can tell you, all of our other groups, they don't do that. They call us when they have a claims issue. All of our fully insured groups call us when they have an issue. So, and we wanna, and we wanna provide that service. I mean, you know, do you want happy employees? You know, we want your employees to be happy. You don't want them to be unhappy, 'cause they're gonna be ringing your phone, okay? So, and that's part of what we do. I mean, we wanna keep your employees happy, so you're happy, right? You don't like paying for something that you're unhappy about, do you? So, but anyway, whatever you decide, we're good with. And like I say, if you extend your, extend our contract, we're gonna continue to do whatever. Now, if you want us to tell them to call the 800 number, we'll do that.
Well, that'll be based on decision, these guys right here.
So, but anyway, any questions?
Well, I will say, I wanna tell you how much we've appreciated the help you've given us, and it's come from, you know, huge, you know, decisions, you know? Half-million dollar decisions, six-figure decisions, over and over, as we've continued to tailor and fine-tune and tweak that plan. And it's resulted in, you know, we immediately got a whole lot of benefit that first year of transition, and we continued, you know, to reap a lot of benefits. And you continued to steer us away from and towards decisions that we would not have had a clue on how to make. Now, those decisions were a lot more important in a self-funded situation, where we're designing the plan, and we depend upon you to make changes annually, or monthly, or semi-annually, or whatever, and you often provided stellar service there for us. And all of our employees do love working with you, and they understand the service that you provide. So regardless of what we do, thank you for what you have provided for us.
Sure, thank you. It's been fun.
I think anybody on this court would be strong advocates for anybody considering the services of a consultant. I think these guys now have a decision, do they want to continue to pay for an intermediary to keep those happy employees? Do you feel like TAC will provide that 1-800 number service that will be adequate for our employees? I don't know the answers to those, but it's now your time to decide that. Whether you do it today, or you put it off, you've still gotta make a decision here. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road. Higginbotham needs to know, and we need to know what to instruct our employees to do.
Brian, just one last thing, too. We'd be, we'd love to have what I would call like a closeout meeting as it relates to, you know, 2019, as far as the self-funded plan goes, to kind of let you know where you wound up and that sort of thing. If y'all wanna see that, then we'd be happy to do that for you, so.
We'd definitely want that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. right. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, discussion. This is your time to share your thoughts with one another so that you can make a decision here.
I make a motion that we terminate the contract September this year.
September this year, which would give us, at the end of September, along with the budget year, is that what you're thinking?
Exactly.
Which would give
Yes.
Our employees a nine-month assistance with those run-out claims. And, you know, if you want caps to continue caps, I keep calling it caps, Higginbotham is to provide them not only run-out expenses but guidance on Blue Cross, Blue Shield claims. So, that is the motion from Commissioner Riddle to maintain this current relationship with Higginbotham at that approximate two thousand dollars a month cost from now through September thirty.
September first or the thirtieth? Through September, the end of September?
Thirty. Yeah, the quarter.
Thirtieth?
The quarter, the year end. Our year end.
Mm-hmm.
That sounds good to me. I make a motion, second that motion.
Second comes from Commissioner Fitch. All in favor? Any questions about what you're voting on here? Otherwise, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that a, is that a yea from everybody? Okay. There's a unanimous decision. All right. That's what we wanna do for the time being. I would like to think that if the future changes and we need to come back to you and reopen that relationship and say, hey, we need some fresh guidance. Things are not going the way we want them or we think they could go better or whatever, then we could regroup with you all after that time. And in the meantime, I think that it would be prudent for you all to start saying, hey, just letting you know, into this fiscal year, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna be able to help you all. And so, we wanna help you know who the people you need to contact with at TAC so that they can start doing some self-help rather than you completely leading them through there. But, thank you again. I think this is a reasonable decision. That gives you all something to plan for and something for us to plan for. But, once again, thank you very much for what you've done and what you'll do for the next nine months. Okay?
All right.
Right. Very good. Okay. Now, for some big decisions. Discuss the county storage building located on the lot next to the Justice Center with possible action to follow. Commissioner Fitch has identified a little ten-by-ten storage building there on the south side of the Justice of the Peace Building and feels like he could put it to better use. So, I'm gonna let you kinda tell us about.
Okay. This building was brought to my attention last summer by Irma Dunn. They do not use the storage building anymore over at Justice Center. So, I believe it's a twelve by sixteen, ten by fourteen, something like that size. Just has one door on it. It's completely empty. James has a key to it. So, I just haven't brought it up to the Commissioners' Court what we would like to do with that building, mainly to move it 'cause it's unsightly on that lot, on that north, what, south side of the building. I have a use for it in my precinct. I'd like to use it for storage, store my signs in it if, and I just wanna bring it up to y'all. Y'all may, whoever needs it has the best need for that building. I haven't asked Tim Ingram if he was interested in it, if they needed any more storage outside facility, especially on their fenced-in lot next door. So, we might, we, I just saw that. Might wanna ask him if he has any ideas about it.
He's got a huge.
He does have a building there.
He's got a huge.
And it's underground storage. So, he has a basement.
He doesn't, he doesn't need it anymore. He needs to clean that one up.
Mm-hmm. So, moving the building, I think we can move it. I have a flatbed trailer. I, my guys looked at it. Yeah, we can move it. So, we can move it. If y'all are not interested, I'd like to take the building and move it out to my precinct facility. So.
Be fun.
About five years or so, maybe Jimmy, you remember this, but we, we cleaned that thing out. We had a lawnmower and a weed eater and a power washer and several other odds and ends that we put up for sale. And we got, we got some money for that stuff. And so, I don't even know what's left in there. Did you, were you able to?
Me and James looked at it. There's a box in there.
Okay. All right. Any questions about this or if y'all are agreeable to allowing Commissioner Fitch to store his campaign signs in there?
Oh, my goodness, no.
To store his.
Strictly business signs, road signs on this deal. Let me clarify.
I was just kidding. That was just a joke. All right. I just need a motion. Why don't you put that in?
I make a motion to move the Little Red building out to Precinct Two facility.
Motion. I'll say, I'll say motion in a second. All in favor of removing the storage building from JP property to move it out to Precinct Two, say aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, discuss the Riddle Street building with possible action to follow. Left this very general and open. And this was brought up by Commissioner Fitch a couple of weeks ago. And we've had discussions over the years on whether or not we want to maintain that building. And I'll stop there and let Commissioner Fitch kinda tell us his thoughts.
Well, just looking at general real estate, we use most everything for county purposes. This building, the location of it and a general use for it in the future for the county, I can't think of anything unless something burnt to the ground and we just had to move the Justice Center there. I mean, just for an extra, we'll just have to go somewhere else. But, to me, I don't really, I feel like we're in the real estate business as far as renting a building that somebody else could be renting. Property taxes, we'll still get property taxes off the building. I don't think we should be in competition with anybody as far as renting offices. Couple points on this building is we bought it in two thousand thirteen and we kept it about four or five months and we started renting it to Texas Workforce Commission. Paid two hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents for the building. We don't have anything on file other than just some general cleanup around the building. And we don't really have any monies that we've invested as far as remodel. We did do some drainage issue repairs in the back. We installed a French drain out of our own materials that we had. So, over the years, we, this building has brought in two hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. So, now we're finally in the clear of what we, our initial investment was. And that makes it a good time to possibly sell this building. The good points about it is it has a renter. And the Workforce Commission is just fixing to sign a new contract on it for another year. The rent is thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. So, that's a good point of sale on the building. I'd like to do a little more research on what we would like to sell this building for. I don't know if we need to really go through a, a real estate company. If we decide on a price that we think is fair, fair market value, we could ask and be the seller ourself and possibly sell that building without paying a six percent, you know, commission to a real estate company. So, we can try that at first just to see if y'all are interested in selling the building at this time. So, that's what I had to say about, I'm interested in selling it. So, hear what y'all think about it.
Well, let me tell you, I'm interested in selling it too. But I don't know where in the world you come up with those fantastic numbers.
I got them from our auditor, Barbara Sherbert.
Okay. Barbara Sherbert. We gave the Mount Pleasant Independent School District or the City of Mount Pleasant a hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and forty-five cents. And I have a list of all the spending we did on the building. And it comes to about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then we spent night when we decided to sell to Workforce. Here's the minutes of the meeting, ninety thousand dollars to get it configured to where Texas, Texas Workforce would rent it from us.
We have any record that we could find on those repairs.
Wait a minute.
So, this may be what's involved, involved in my figure.
I don't, what's involved in your figure?
Did I add another ninety thousand?
Then you were saying. Wow. And there's more. We had, we, on this list here, I can only find two checks for Chris Basham of two thousand and five thousand dollars. Two different checks, two different dates. Got the check numbers, where they are. And then, but he billed us for Engage, what'd he call the company? Another company. And one time, he gave twelve, eleven thousand dollars to Larry Lartes because they were doing all the work on the building. And you look at these buildings and you got checks made out to Larry Lartes who made them out to another vendor, like Files Painting or Files Painting was in here. But we got lots of them. And then, and then he's got sixteen thousand dollars Larry Lartes did. We paid him to haul off stuff. We had Precinct Two and we had Precinct Three that spent a week while we were in our classes. And they hauled off all that stuff. I don't know how in the world. Then, then he hired, I guess we paid him the, the company to haul off the, to do the stuff with Caterpillar. He's a dirt contractor here. And we paid him too, eighty-four hundred dollars or something. So, those numbers.
What's your total figure? Do you have a total?
A total? Yeah.
Yeah, what is it?
No, I don't have.
You don't have one?
We got, I have three hundred and, well, you got two hundred five thousand, then you got thirty-three thousand and fifty dollars. And then you got ninety thousand. But there was other bills in there from Engage Council, whatever he called his company. We have checks made out to him. We had checks made out to, to Chris Basham, his name. And then we had other names. But we never did get that big check that he, where he gave eleven thousand dollars to Larry Lartes. So, it's just, this is a minimum. If we could get our money back, I'm for us not being in the real estate business.
Yes.
We're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand or forty thousand.
Okay. Regardless, then we're, if your figures are correct, we're in the hole. Cause we've only, we've only gotten two hundred forty-eight thousand as up until this January.
You've got this.
So, that two forty-one, eight fifteen, maybe Barbara's the ninety thousand plus the original purchase price maybe. And then they might have had, that was that five months that we didn't have a renter. They must've been remodeling that building. We, we, it's hard to find those figures in our figures.
The number that I gave you is the only capital outlay and fixed assets for the hogging. Any other repairs that we did, if it's not something that significantly extends the life of the building, doesn't go into fixed assets. It's just an accounting principle. So, I gave you what the original cost was. Any other repairs and maintenance does not go into that.
Cause that one report had some depreciationable
Yes.
Repairs and it wasn't listed with those buildings. Okay.
Those aren't required to be in that.
Regardless, yeah. Okay.
And, and that ain't all. We, we kept, I asked, I had to ask, I had to write, I wrote a letter. John, John Corbin had to write a letter to Chris Basham to get the receipts for this stuff. And you should have checked for all of them, checks for made out all different types of people. I, I would hate to have the job of you trying to figure out what we paid. I've got a list here and I know that I missed a bunch of them. I've got this list, each of them, got the check numbers. And you're welcome to try them. And I wish you would look it over. Cause if you look for Engage Council, you'd find some more bills you could add to this. So, for us to do, you know, spend it, and, and if we keep this building now, and, and the judge was one of the guys that convinced us that we should do the, it would pay for a sale. And we might need it sometime. So, now we've got it nearly paid for. And why would we take less than what we've got in it? Why? It'd pay for a sale. We figured out about twelve years. So, why would we wanna sell it when it's on a, on a schedule? It'll be paid for. And so, for us to take anything less than what we've got in it would be absolutely a waste of the taxpayers' money. That's all I got to say.
Sounds worse than I start, thought, thought about then. Let's get it going.
How do you define what we have in it? The total dollars out minus the total dollars in? Or are you just talking about the total dollars out?
Total dollars out.
You're not gonna factor in that quarter of a million dollars in rent, rent income?
Why should we stop paying for it? Why should we take deduction when we've got rented out? And what do they, sign contracts for two or three years is, is all they'll sign a contract for? And then the minutes here that we do it, we get the cost of living increased or whatever it is, thirty-two hundred. So, it's on the minutes. If you wanna look at any of these minutes, they're, they're, I've got them listed. But we had meetings and you can check them out yourself. But I've got them all right here.
We rent it for twelve months at a time. So.
Yeah. A little, a little history on that. We did make a significant expenditures to get that building ready for Workforce Solutions. The immediate thing that we did when we were negotiating that purchase, we got contacted, I mean, immediately by Workforce Solutions who had found themselves in a situation where they no longer had a building. And they were looking at literally, the decision was almost made to leave Titus County and to lease space in another town. But what we were able to do, we bought that building. We gave them short-term, immediate space for their operations. And after, and that was not ever intended to be a long-term situation. Back then, we were thinking about that as a future location for our elections, excuse me, our Adlauran taxes and auto registration, moving them over there. And, and we decided that really nobody wanted to move off campus and move over there. That's when we were contacted by Workforce Solutions. We provided them an immediate place to put their operation in. We saved that relationship with Workforce. They kept their office there, which provides services for our employers and employees. And then after a few months of being in there on a temporary basis, that was literally just a, I think, month to month at a time, they approached us and said, hey, you know what? We think that this building might be a good long-term location for us. And we would be interested in continuing to lease from the county, but we do need to make some adjustments to that building. We completely redid the parking lot, the sidewalks, and the front door needed some work. It had some drainage issues, some heat and air conditioning, plumbing issues. And so, part of the price that we worked out with Workforce Solutions factored in us getting, essentially, we made a loan to them in the form of leasehold improvements that we got back with a minimum guaranteed rent coming from them. So, Commissioner Riddle's is accurate, I believe, in all of those. And there may be some other expenses there. I do agree a hundred percent that at this point, I don't believe we need to own that building anymore. And there's nothing wrong with talking about selling it if that's what y'all would like to do. If I thought that there was a real reason to hang on to it, I tell you, but I don't. It's making good money right now. The expenses are behind us and they've been a good tenant. And it's been a good positive relationship. Whatever y'all would like to do.
Well, we can wait. At the end of this year, we'll probably have two ninety return on our investment in that building. So, if we sell it now, I need maybe figure those figures and, and do some study on how far off we are as just getting back to our initial investment. But even selling it and making some money off of it on fair market value of that building may, we may break even or come out a little ahead. I hope we'll come out a little ahead on it. I'd rather cut and run before we have to do another major remodel. That's my thoughts. What are you thinking, Al? Do you wanna wait and get our money back on this rent a little longer?
I think we ought to pay for it. We ought to stick with our plan.
Pay for it first.
We'll, we'll get it, yeah, get it totally paid for, but not by these numbers that you have.
Yeah, I've got the wrong numbers. Hey, I just went to what I could find. So, me and you need to look at some things and get us, we may have to go another couple of years.
Well, I don't, if we get our money, if we could get all of our money back now, I'm for selling it. But I'm not gonna deduct any of this rent that we've collected.
No, no.
We've spent all kinds of money other than, since it's been, they've been a tenant. Matter of fact, we put new air conditions in it. We've already put new air conditions in it again. We did that a couple of years ago or a year ago.
No, no, that's, that's not accurate.
Well, we had a big bill from Robert's Air Condition to put in some kind of building. Then we had to do some tree cutting or tree trimming or whatever it was. And gutters replaced last year. There's always something coming up where we're spending money on this building. And so, this, this should be, well, as a landlord, there's nothing wrong with that except that we should get the building paid for what we put into our initially.
Yeah. I agree with that. Well, let's bring that back to, we should, I, I'm agreement, we need to sell the building. So, let's figure a price on it that we can get our money back out of it and sell it.
Who we gonna let figure the price of it?
I guess we'll just have to get with somebody that's got some more ideas about what real estate sells for, you know?
I'd like to know what we, what we've got in it.
Mm-hmm.
An accurate report. And I feel that mine are less than accurate. And they're less. less money if you've got them all. That $90,000, I don't have any of that, and I think they come up with the, through the Engage Concept and another deal. I think we put it under something else, because the bills stopped coming in about that time, all the receipts I've got here.
Well, we definitely never work cut out.
I think that Barbara, with the little guidance from Carl, can give you an accurate list of everything's been on that building, and I think that'd be good information for you to know. All right, so, any action?
I make a motion that we sell the building if we do choose to sell it to, when we find out how much we have in it. I make a motion, we sell that building if we choose to do that. So, should we just wait till we find out the figures?
Do you want to start with a motion that would accumulate all costs of that building first?
Let's find out what we owe, okay. I make a motion, we find out what we owe on this building, consider selling it.
There you go. All right. Let's find out what we have in that building and consider selling it would be the motion. Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? There are none. All right, very good. Number eight, approve oral and written reports of county officials, and I think that's been provided for you there by Barbara.
Make a motion, we approve, approve the report?
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Pass this down to you for your signatures. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Motion, we approve the report?
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch regarding the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? There are none. Another form for your signature. All right, Barbara, item number 10 is approve budget amendments.
We have three budget amendments to that. The first one is something that you approved at the last commissioner's court. That's for Judge Dunn in precinct two, Justice Dees, to pay $3,000 from her computer system and justice court technology, and to use that, that money to pay for the accrued leave, her employee who resigned. So, y'all already approved that. This is just the actual budget amendment for that. It's all the signature on that. The second one, this is number 13 of this year, is to consolidate the debt service, and as Lanny Walker told y'all, there's, there are five pages to this, because in order to take all those individual funds and consolidate those into one, we have to actually move every item out of the individual fund, which requires an amendment, and then another amendment into the new fund to set those up. And my duty is that he had recommended keeping those all separate. So, when they're all done, when you get a report, you'll be able to see how much is due for principal, interest, and paying agency fees. I think the county's line item calls that bond registrancy. That's for, you know, reasons bank, to take some money in and pay some money out. So, there are five pages of this one, but the net impact is, actually, there's a net impact of $1,945 to the good, and the reason for that is when we refinanced the bonds for 2012, 2012 eight that moved to 2019, the payment was reduced for this year by $1,945. But the net, without, we have not done the net to be zero. So, I've got that for you to approve. And then the next one is, my understanding is that we have a radio grant that the county manages, and I believe that Chief McCray and Judge Lee oversee that each year, and we've gotten that, and we need to put that in our books. It's $16,828 in revenue, and then that will be used for a radio expense of the same amount. Any questions?
How many different funds does that consolidate related to that? That's our?
063, 066, 069, 062, 065. I'll get that right.
Okay. That's our adjustments from this meeting?
Make a motion, approve.
Motion is made to approve these budget amendments by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 11, sign pay orders and approve your bill payments.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Are we, are we going to have any change in procedure on payment of these bills now or in the future over what we have been doing?
Is there something you want to change?
No, I was just, in talking to and reading Joan's email to me the other day, I just wondered if we had made a decision to make a change on any of that. I'm not sure I understand exactly what she was referring to, but I would like to get together with y'all to have a better understanding on that. The bills that we're approving, being paid today, would you define kind of what those are? Are those the bills up through current?
Those are the bills from January 13th through today.
Through today or through Friday, through today?
Through, well, Friday was the, but, but it said 27th because that's the date of course.
Okay.
Now, I understand that the court approved something back in July because of the new Senate bill, I forgot the number of it, that, that allows us to go ahead and pay things if we have signatures on them, and we are doing that in some cases in order to avoid late fees.
So, really no, no change in policy? And normally on Monday morning, we're not still processing payments, which we're typically cutting these off Friday afternoon.
That's our goal, but we did that on the 13th. That's why you have the 13th in here, because we had some things that weren't ready, but we needed to get those paid, and so we brought those today.
All right. Good, did I have a motion in a second? Yes. All in favor of signing the pay orders and approving payment of those bills, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 12, closing comments, if any. Let me tell you about a couple of issues. I did get, get contacted by a voter who had found out about closing of at least one box, and I contacted Sue Evenwell about this, and let me tell you how she responded. The, the first, or the question that I was asked by the voter that called me, I asked to Sue, I said, can you tell me about the decision to close the Neville's box for the primary election, for the primary election in March? I've gotten one call, and I want to be able to provide an explanation. Sue's response is, yes, the executive committee looked at the Republican primary voters in Neville's Chapel and saw that a majority voted early. We have combined that box in the past by bringing precinct eight into 15. This time, we thought folks come into town easier than going in reverse. The increased numbers in early voting was also the reasoning behind combining precinct three, 16, and 17 into the civic center, precincts one, 18, and 14 into the courthouse annex, and precincts 11 and 12 into Winfield School. We are keeping the remote precincts open and combining the precincts in town or close to it. As a side note, the law asks me to earnestly search for people living in a precinct to serve in that precinct for election day. I do have someone willing to be a presiding judge in 15, but finding two more clerks is nearly impossible. If folks would like to help in that regard, I'd love to hear from them. You can have people call me for questions. The Republican Party runs their own election, and we'd like to have more people learn the process and the purpose of a primary. All the polls will be open in November, all the polls open in November. Some might want to wait until then. So, again, the issue here is not really our decision. I'm just letting you all know that the Republican Party has decided to combine some of these based, again, on the much higher percentages that we're seeing in early voting, and therefore you'll have fewer options if you're going to vote in the Republican primary in March. So, you've got multiples here that have been provided. So, again, I just tell you that, just so you will know the reasoning behind that and be able to spread that information to voters coming up. Won't be any change in the early vote location. That will always be made as easy as possible for people to do. I have not received any notification from the Democratic Party about their intentions to do anything similar. Item number two, we have a ice machine at the senior meal center that has gone out. It's not repairable. The initial bid that we got from John Wayne, who works on ice machines, for a replacement was some $5,000 plus dollars for a brand-new one. Don't think we want to spend that. James contacted for me, Mike Baker with ARS Restaurant Repair. We have used in the past, I used him many, many years ago. Trust Mike. He is recommending a Hosha Zaki machine, which is also what I had years ago, very good machine, that will have an adequate amount of capacity for that facility, somewhere in the $2,500 range. So, I'm hoping to get that bid from him today or tomorrow. Didn't have it here for your approval today, since this was posted last Thursday, but since this is a pretty basic necessity, a repair and maintenance issue, I wanted you to be aware of this, and if anybody has a problem with that, let me know. But right now, they are without ice at that facility, and they're having to buy bagged ice each day. So, if you are okay with that expenditure, I would like to be able to get, get him going on that. We can postpone this decision, but in that, it is well below our threshold, and because of the nature of this, I would like to go ahead and authorize that expenditure on my own when I get that bid from Mike. That's all that I have. I'll start with Commissioner Riddles.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Fitch.
I don't have anything.
All right. Commissioner Applewhite?
I'm going to look into some addresses we got issued on the voters' boxes, and I will get with the election office today to Sugar Hill and Largo addresses. We're not the right ones, but we will get them straight.
Commissioner Parker?
Only thing I have is, I'd like to thank John for meeting with Tex Dot the other day on these two bridge project and getting all that worked out. It, that's a big help to us, so I appreciate him doing that.
What came, what came out of that meeting?
We, we got approved of our part out of those road and bridges, so we had about $110,000 worth of, was our part on both bridges, and so all the work's been done and approved, and we're done with them. We'll hear about those bridges when they finish them. So, they should start on them in the summer sometime.
Only thing I've got to do is go take the weight limit signs.
Two weight limit signs down.
Down at the Williams Creek.
Yes, and I've got to put one up. They ordered one for me, so they kind of, they, they notice that when they do those inspections.
Yeah.
And they're going to do another inspection on all our bridges this year, and we'll get that book, I guess, in the fall, you know, with all the needs of the bridges in the county, so.
Better not get some more. This is a, end of.
It's a good deal.
The project that started years ago where they put in so many, we paid 10% to the county, and the, these are the last two bridges that's left. They, we're through, and I've got one that needs to be replaced so bad on Pine Creek. It's unqualified, so I don't have, but anyway.
Okay, well, that's good news. Thanks, y'all, for working on that. If there is nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.